Good morning, everyone. I love your guys' energy for a Saturday morning. I know my team member who I forced to wake up really early and drive from Gainesville this morning probably isn't the happiest with me, so I'm glad you all are happy to see us. Love you, Tara. So, I'm Kathy Ebon, the Director of Planning for JB Pro. With me, and because of him I'm here, is Jason Green, who is the Director of Planning for AXIS. And we are really excited to be here today. This is going to be a fun activity. We're here to play. We're here to hear what you want to hear, what you want to tell us. We're here to have a good discussion. That's why we've tried to mix you up and not have you with all of your friends at the same table. We want you to hear from each other. We want to hear from you. So, today is the kind of public kickoff of Vision 2050. Jason has been working on this effort for about six months, so he's been doing a lot of the background, behind-the-scenes work, but he asked us to come and help with the community engagement process, and so this is sort of that public start of the effort. And we will be doing this now through October. So, we're excited to be working with you, and we're thankful to the city for encouraging this kind of activity. This is not something that every community does. Not every community engages in a discussion with their community as they're working to do their planning efforts, and we really applaud the City of Deltona for doing so. So, happening today, I'm going to give you a quick overview of the project. We're going to talk about the schedule for the public engagement component. We're going to talk, we're going to do table discussions, and we'll talk a little bit about how that's going to work. And then, we're going to do a share-out so that everyone at all the different tables can hear what everyone had to say, and hopefully you're going to hear that you had some different ideas, but you also had a lot of common ideas. And then, we're going to talk about how we're going to move forward. So, the reason that we are doing Vision 2050 is because this is a guide for envisioning Deltona's future. This is the beginning of updating your comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan is the master plan for your community, and this activity and the activities that are going to follow it are really going to help us provide a focused discussion for engaging this Deltona community. It's a tool for how you envision what your future is going to be. It's a roadmap for your future. You know, if anyone who plans a trip, you have to start somewhere. Well, this is the start. This is where we start, and we start talking about what do we want for Deltona's future. Just like if you were going on a trip, you would be talking to the people you're going to go on that trip. Where do you want that trip to go? Well, this is where we're going to start. And ultimately, it's a strategy, and it leads to a strategy that the city can follow for their planning efforts, but also for their budget efforts and how they deliver public services. So, the comprehensive plan is more than your future land use map. It's what, the future land use map is what most people think about when they think about your comprehensive plan, but a comprehensive plan is really more than that. It is about capital improvement, so how do you spend your money? It's about code enforcement. It's about zoning. It's about community character and design. It's about transportation. It's about your environment. It's about where you might want to annex land in the future. It's about how do you preserve the history of your community from the past. All of these kinds of things, all of these ideas and things come together in policies and standards that start in the comprehensive plan, but are a living document that breeds into your capital improvement element, into your land development code, into your public service plans, and how you do business on an everyday basis. Comprehensive plan includes a lot of elements and a lot of components, from community character and design, land use and development, housing, neighborhoods, transportation, economic development, public facilities, history, culture, education, natural resources, environment, and how do we govern our community on an everyday basis. And today, we are going to go through an exercise where you're going to get an opportunity to talk about all of these in a pretty directed way, but hopefully a very thoughtful way. So, this is our visionings process. As I mentioned, we're going to be doing this from now till October. We're starting here today with vision setting. This is, whatever is on your mind, this is what we want to hear about. There are no right or wrong answers today. We want to hear whatever you have to say, whether it's a challenge or an opportunity, whether you think it's something that we need to address or we need to support. We want to hear whatever you have to say about your community. This is your opportunity to really talk about those. And I know that we have planning commissioners and city council members here today, but today, we're all the same. Today, we are all the same place. We are all residents of the community of Deltona, and all of our ideas matter equally. So, if you're a public citizen and you're sitting with a council member or commissioner and you think, "Well, they're the ones who are really driving this," that's not the way today works. Today, we all get to have that equal voice. We want to hear your ideas. We want to hear your concerns. We want to hear your different perspectives, and we want you to listen to everybody else's ideas and concerns and different perspectives, because we want to develop some understanding of the challenges and strengths and opportunities that are facing Deltona's future as we develop the vision. The next step will be in August. We will come back, and we will be identifying some commonalities. So, where were those common threads? Where were those common themes? Where were those common things that people were thinking about, both challenges, strengths, opportunities? Where are your needs and your demands moving forward? Those are the things that we're going to focus on when we get to August, so that in October, we can establish a shared vision. And that shared vision then will become the planning guiding principle for your future, and it will become how your comprehensive plan is updated as we move forward into that phase. So, today, we're going to start with some table discussions. This is supposed to be fun. This is supposed to be, this is supposed to be a play, but we do have some ground rules. As I mentioned, everybody is equal today. Everybody has ideas, perspectives are equal, but in order to make sure that happens, we have some things that we want you to think about. We want everybody to be attentive to each other. We want people to be collaborative. We want you to share ideas and think through ideas. We want you to be considerate, so we really want you to listen, listen, and we want to provide opportunities for people who are used to speaking and people who are not so used to speaking. We want the person who is more quiet to speak up today, and we want the person who is used to speaking maybe to sit back a little bit and listen, share your ideas, but make sure that everybody at the table has an opportunity to fully talk through their ideas. We want you to be cooperative and engaging. We want you to be honest. You know, this is a chance for you to be brutally honest. We want to hear you, and we don't want you to walk away going, "You know, I wish I had just said that." This is your chance to say whatever is on your mind. We want you to be inquisitive. If somebody says something that sparks an idea for you, we want you to ask questions yourselves. We do have facilitators. Can all of us who are facilitators raise your hands? So, each of your table has a facilitator? Yes, you do. You just have me to be sitting up here right now. So, but we want you, we want you to be honest, and we want you to be inquisitive. We want you to be respectful. There is no right or wrong answer, and there are no bad answers today, and so we want you to be respectful of people who may have a difference of opinion. We want you to be thoughtful, and mostly, we want you to be understanding. So, we want you to be very empathetic today and really listen and understand people's ideas. And so, that's the ground rules for today, and as we move forward, these ground rules will stay throughout the whole visioning process. So, I'm going to quickly go through this, and then we'll go to the back. Every question has 15 minutes, so it's a quick, it's a quick discussion. We believe that's enough time. I've done, I've been doing planning for almost 30 years, and I've done a lot of these activities, and 15 minutes seems to be right about the sweet space where people have had their full say and they're ready to move on. So, you're going to get 15 minutes first to talk about your character and your community character, your vision for the community. The next topic is going to be dealing with development, housing, and economic. Your next topic is on transportation and connectivity. Your next topic is going to be on parks, public spaces, and environmental assets, and your final one is public facilities and services. And I'm going to just stop for here for a second to say that this also includes schools. We know that you are not a school district, and I have spent a good portion of my career working for school districts as the Director of Planning for school, for school districts in Florida. But, we also know that schools are really, really important, so we do want you to talk about schools, and we will be collaborating with the school district as we move forward so that they can hear your ideas. But, you have a role in helping make sure that your schools are great, because we know that residents pick their communities largely on their public services, where their parks are, where their community, community centers are, where their schools are, their water. So, all public services are really important. I'm going to do one more thing. Everybody has a few tools, and I'm going to try and stay by the microphone, but I also know I have a big voice, so. So, everybody's got a toolbox, and your toolbox includes a big map that you, I've seen everybody already pointing at, and then you have a series of questions or kind of thought, ideas that your facilities or facilitators are going to use. Don't think you have to answer those questions specifically. They're just meant to think, have you thinking about or helping you understand what we want you to think about. We have tape. The tape is meant for you, you can use this to help draw on your map where you might want a connection or however you want to use it. You have different sizes dots. You've got big dots, you've got small dots, you've got medium-sized dots. Again, if there is a specific point that you want us to know about, we want you to use the dots to help us tell you that. We've got some colored pens and pencils there to write on. You can write on the board, or you can write on the map. It's totally your choice. This is your group. This is your table. You run it how you want. And then, there's some varying sizes sticky notes, and again, these are meant for you to be able to write a quick sticky note because you want something to stand out. And then, finally, somewhere in this box, there's some flag, there's some flag stickers, and the flag stickers are meant for you to be able to, there they are. You have some flag stickers, and the flag stickers are meant for you to pinpoint something. So, you can use this box however you want. This is play, you know? They say everything you needed to know you learned in kindergarten? Well, we're bringing back the play today, and we want you to play. We want you to enjoy this conversation. We want you to have a full discussion, and then at the end, we're going to share the maps, and we're going to share the discussion that everyone had. So, at that, we are going to, whoever is the timekeeper? Perfect. Okay. So, at that, we're going to start 15 minutes. Topic one, have fun, everyone. Hi, everybody. Can you finish up the conversations? We are going to go into a sharing of our ideas, and we have eight tables, and we have about 20 minutes left. So, but before we do that, Jason, you want to do, try and do the photo? Now?
Sure.
Because I'm sure once we do the wrap-up, people are going to be ready to go. So, we would, Jason and I would like to take a photo. First of all, thank you for coming out. This is an awesome turnout for a Saturday morning when I know that there's a lot of other things in your lives that are equally pressing, and I really appreciate it on behalf of your city staff for you taking some time to come out and talk about what you want for the future of Deltona. Jason and I would like to do a selfie with you all, if you could, just quickly. All right. So, we want you to look up here for a second. Thank you, guys. Maybe he thought he was going to break the camera. Okay. So, what we're going to do is, real quick, I would like every table to find one person, and could you do me a favor and just go onto a new sheet, and then what ideas people write, just write them down? So, I want everyone, we're going to go through each table, and I want you to top, give us the top five answers that you had on each topic. And if you hear another idea, please say pass, because we don't have a lot of time to get through this. So, we're going to start at this table, and we're going to ask you to be respectful and listen to each other, so. Top five, really quick.
All right. Top five voting. So, whatever the first category was.
All right. Can you hear me now, Verizon? All right. So, our top things for the first category were disorganized, diversity, good and negative, services, amenities, lacking youth services.
We're just doing vision right now, so your top five ideas and your vision. Who's speaking here?
Unorganized, needs transition, character is residential.
For us, we decided that Deltona were trying to lean towards a, you know, family area, so family-inclusive activities are needed. We consider this a diverse city, and the JPA is outdated and needs to be updated.
All right. Top five answers, needs to be assisted. Top five, which one, Eric's going to talk about. Your community member here. Top five of your vision, your, top five of your ideas from your, of your topic one, your vision.
Well, disorganized, community areas being needed, potential?
No, I was just saying potential was one. Want to end on a positive note.
Thank you. Matt? Matt, top five of the vision.
How you doing? We had a lot, so, but it was infrastructure for a wonderful downtown Deltona that meets the Deltona city. See? Telling you. All right. Redoing the infrastructure as well, too. We talked about, you know, building sidewalks in needed areas and redeveloping some of the areas like off of Deltona Boulevard that has a lot of space that could have some professional buildings in there as well, too. We were talking about using, redeveloping the parks and using them as community centers as well, too. Oh, sorry. I went too far. And affordable housing.
All right. What's your vision for Deltona?
Okay. So, our vision, sorry for this bitter pill, it lacks organization. We came up with that as well, as well as lacking a little bit of community pride. Need more businesses and a little more transparency with the city, and then hopefully a diverse community that's more than just a bedroom community.
Our vision for the future is, Daniel? All right. What's our vision for the future?
Change and broken, Campbell Park and Trails. There's dysfunction and following through, and retail downtown and some sit-down restaurants.
And finally, what's your, your vision for Deltona?
So, we have, our top five are that development should and can occur, but it needs to be smart and following a strategic direction that's transparent to residents. The second is that we need to focus on preservation of Osteen, leverage the JPA in a better way that incorporates commercial development, but not Amazon industrial commercial, more appropriate for the area. Leveraging additional green space and conservation throughout the city of Deltona, not just in the tiny little pockets that exist. Improving parks and access to local businesses, keeping people in Deltona instead of allowing them to move over to downtown Sanford, Lake Mary, et cetera. And then, the last thing was mismanaged and imbalanced infrastructure.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're going to start this time on this corner. Top five answers regarding your development patterns.
So, we came up with less gated communities. What else? Some proactive stormwater development, development practices, finishing unfinished development. We need a coffee house, a microbrew, and I think a playhouse would actually be really well here, too. Just throwing that out there. We had a lot of stuff. I know, okay, development, okay. We talked about getting sidewalks in some of the appropriate areas for state street for kids, better bike paths. Those are the main ones that we had. Anyone else? Oh, yeah. Redeveloping some of the parks to make it more community-friendly as well. I think that was it. Those were the top three we had.
I think she was, I think Michelle was trying to say that we also talked about redeveloping some of the areas so they could be the mixed-use centers that they wanted in their vision statement. Did I, was that what you were thinking? All right.
All right. So, top five is lack of commercial and the infrastructure to support it. Need commercial centers. Economic development. Pause on residential. I'll say that again, pause on residential. And potentially redeveloping Deltona Boulevard. A lot of opportunity there.
All right. Top five and how you want to develop.
More small-scale commercial. We need more touch points in the process between submittals from applications going all the way through all of the board reviews and to council for final approval, and we also need to fix the codes and take out the inconsistencies and discrepancies.
Top five of your, it's John's.
We put that we need jobs and types of businesses to come to the city and annex land to be used as commercial-only, Osteen Village area.
All right. We summarized it to protection and expansion of green spaces with larger buffers. Reuse commercial space, reduce, reuse, recycle, maximize those CRAs like Deltona Boulevard, and avoid urban sprawl by reusing what we already have. We asked the commission to be a little bit more stringent on their development approvals and walkability to services and entertainment.
All right. We got, we got three sidewalks, permeable surfaces, shade, green spaces, commercial industrial, sticking to the plan, and pause residential and commercial.
And finally?
We also said walkability, but you need more commercial than also you can, and one of the suggestions was maybe smaller density for the housing developments that do come. Of course, again, we have enough housing, but that was, I say, if you're going to have it, maybe make them build, have bigger lots and quality shops, mixed-use, small neighborhood centers.
All right. All right. Matt, kick us off with transportation.
Transportation, connectivity, all right. So, basically, we wanted to provide areas where residents can actually live, work, eat, and play. That was a big one. We wanted to complete the streets and the sidewalks, as well as minimize the transportation barriers for low-income housing.
All right. So, lack of streetlights, which leads to potentially lack of pedestrian safety. Sorry for those that have my back. Not ADA compliant, lack of light-up crosswalks, and a trail network. So, we have a lot of great trails, but many of them don't connect or lead anywhere.
So, our commercial corridors, there's too many county roads, so we, the city has no control or little control with regards to all of the county roads, and so we also have a lack of connectivity, and we have gaps in our sidewalks.
We also mentioned road improvements and infrastructure. There were some very, we specified some very specific areas that are, the traffic in Normandy and Saxon, Finsland Saxon, Doyle and Providence, so many places that we feel are unsafe for transport, that it just need to be, we're not sure exactly there. Sidewalks are definitely needed more in this city. That would help the walkability factor, but, and just a little bit more public transportation potentially, that doesn't go to all the places.
Stop, or every one of the tables saw issues with Helen Boulevard, Normandy Boulevard, Saxon with accidents. There's issues with school pickups going into main roads. We talked about adding bike lanes and adding Voltrans stops.
Our group one had ended trails expansion and connectivity of existing and new points of interest. Public transportation, public points include weekend services, improved traffic infrastructure, weekends, land bridge, and larger paths. Connect the dots, multi-modal transportation.
We put, there's not enough commercial locations to walk to. Dangerous intersections, Normandy and El Cam, Normandy and Saxon, and Catalina and Howland. We need places, there are safe trails and parks, and for transportational use.
So, yeah, very interesting. Those points were really great, because we have a lot of the same. You know, definitely some better speed control, repairing pedestrian crossways, connected pedestrian bike path systems on street, that are on-street parking regulations, and then more info about the county bus system as well.
Next topic. You want to start?
Oh, parks, okay. So, we have additional community lake events and just more focus around activities around the lake. the lakes, possibly to use solar power for the parks if it's cost-effective in the future, more areas of mixed use with public open space around the parks as well, and then more sewer systems as well, and then more transparency of where funds are going.
Okay, our group, parks, our thoughts were that we need trees in many of the parks, they need to be better maintained, the parks, the areas that need additional public spaces in the parks, yes, we need, and several of the areas, we need more pocket parks in some of these areas. Ways to improve them would be create more of these pocket parks in areas, utilize some of our environmentally sensitive areas that cannot be developed, make those into park lands, passive parks like Audubon Park, like the Three Lakes Park, and other areas, how we can designate more of these areas that we can't utilize for building our commercialized parks to improve our parks overall.
Guys, I need to say, but I hear a lot of chatter, please, you're not listening, so please listen because we want to hear what everyone has to say.
Hi, guess it's me. Baseball, obviously. So, over on the east side, we want to get some baseball, we thought a good place would be like Beck Ranch, so that's a great park, but it's lacking in some, like, larger sports like that. We obviously talked about trees as well, you know, not planting tiny little trees that are going to grow to massive trees that are going to become a problem on a 40-foot lot, so, you know, making, which goes back to lot size as well. We talked about the solar as well, you know, even here in the parking lot, putting solar out here to shade the cars as well as potentially run the building. And then, the stop building until flooding concerns are resolved, so obviously on our side, that's a big concern.
Give a moment for the flooding acknowledgement, okay. So, our themes were to bolster our land development code so that we can prevent and significantly reduce high-density development, focus on more green spaces throughout, leverage things like water's edge and scenic overlooks, appoint an independent environmental, sorry for the word here, czar, or similar, with the ability to affect change, and then connect the dots with interconnectivity, parks and public spaces are great, but if you can't get to them except for by car.
We put update parking at parks, provide activities at the center for the whole community, not allowing anything to be built in wetlands, and park equipment being updated and maintained better.
So, we put down that some of our parks are destinations for non-citizens, that we need to take advantage of that, we need a high-quality recreational corridor for ecotourism and that opportunity, we have a lack of connection between some of our parks, and also to identify the potential for a butterfly triangular park system where we can connect to those, and some of our parks lack some protection. Did I get that right, Jim? You get on the butterflies?
Statue, butterfly statue, statues.
So, for parks and public spaces, we put potentially better use of our lake shore area to have an amenity and gathering place, we also put some of our assets where our lakes, our boat ramp, and then for improvements, I know a lot of folks said more green space, but onto that, we also had more, better utilization of our right-of-ways and medians, you know, that's a perfect opportunity to have beautiful green space areas and to more native landscape.
Is that, oh, public service, yes, public service, last one.
I'm a man of the people and they overrode me, so I listened to what they had to say. I want to say first, there's a lot of similar ideas coming from everybody, so I hope that we can actually implement a lot of these ideas. So, we have increased neighborhood parks, increased pedestrian connectivity with sidewalks as well as the connectivity between the parks, that was a big one, and using the city on community parks as hubs, including redevelopment of lake shore.
Now, we're on the last.
Now, we're on the last one.
So, public services and facilities, so we feel that we may potentially need to do a sanitary sewer map overlay over top of the city so we can identify the areas where we have sewer and where we don't.
And for the record, we have mapped that internally, so we'll make sure that you guys get that, can help with those decisions.
Okay, so, we for public services, we felt that having our local fire safety is a huge asset to the community, we felt that for our police services that in totality, we agree that VCSO does a great job, but we think potentially we, meaning our city, could maybe more efficiently and effectively utilize them. And then for schools, big concerns about the pickup and drop-off, about how that tends to back up into public streets, public traffic causing concerns, and what other one of the folks, sewer accessibility, where we all saw an opportunity for improvement.
All right, so we said that we felt as the schools in the southeast area need to be evaluated with all the growth out there, the schools are starting to become at max capacity. We agree that the fire department is doing a great job as well as utilizing the sheriff as opposed to a city of Deltona police force. We said that we, what is the, oh, the, the school system has their formula, but we just don't know, and it kind of goes back to the same thing, the schools are over, feel like the schools are overflowing, the formula doesn't seem like it's quite working, so just reevaluating the current formula for deciding how many schools need to be in a specific area.
So, public service, very poor and red tape, improvements, there's a lot of lack of staff and better communication and talk to a real person, they need to be connected, and there are no places with sidewalks, we need more sidewalks and a lot of more places with crossing guards, and a dangerous area would be Cortland and India intersection.
Do you want to do it? You want me to do it? Okay. Couple suggestions, one person at our table suggested more free stickers, I won't, I won't tell you who that is. But, you know, some safety programs that are taught in our local schools, creating a safety culture and environment, some school programs to encourage better environmental awareness, and then more city events to promote public safety, and then as well as, what? Fees to, what does that say?
Fees too high.
Oh, fees too high for the public buildings, yeah, so more affordable use of some of the public spaces to our citizens.
Do you want to say hi? Can you say hi? Nope, not this time. Maybe we're all staring at her. All right, so, we just have a few here, so first, invest into Deltona water, we want to get safer roads, especially leading in that Galaxy Middle School in Timbercrest area, more community policing, and the fire department, again, they're doing a great job, but I think there's some limitations, so more fire stations to reduce response time.
On our last one, we, the number one thing that we said is that we need to determine what the capacity of Deltona will be before we can build a master plan or a strategic plan. It was built for 70,000, however, we're at 100,000, and we need to understand what our capacity is before we can build off of that. We recommend qualifying the maximum capacity and building a public services plan off of that capacity. We also talked about school concurrency, that the formula is broken, that the data doesn't include teacher shortages, so that we keep developing with the ability to put buildings here, but not serve as students, basically, we're parking them in buildings without the correct formula to factor in that data. And then we also, the last thing that we said is that this city has a strong desire to be connected based on everybody's recommendation, whether it be through more public meetings like this, bike paths, trails to our schools, connecting parks, that there's a very strong sense of wanting to be connected, so that was our, our last thing.
Wow, what a great way to end. One more, tell us.
High schools, Pine Ridge Heritage and Pride all near each other, schools on, signs for high schools, fire trucks need equipment to help elderly.
Well, thank you very much, you guys, so, I think you've heard a lot of different ideas, but you also heard some very common threads, and those are the things that we are going to tweak out over the next couple of months. We are going to work with staff to provide additional opportunities between now and August so that more people can participate because a number of your tables mentioned, whether in one section or another, that you like this kind of activity and you want people to be able to have an input in the comp plan as we're going forward with it, so we will work with staff to figure out how do we make that happen for you. I want to end on a comment that our table made in the very first part, because I think this kind of sums up really well what you all talked about, that in 20, the vision for Deltona 2050 is that in 2050, we will look, that, I'm going to try and, we will look, there will be areas that look different and we will not look like we do today, but you won't, it won't look so different that you won't be able to recognize who Deltona is. Did I capture that pretty well? So, I think that's a really great comment because that's what this conference of plan is, we're 25 years into the future, but we don't want to be such a different place that we can't recognize ourselves, but we want to make ourselves even better than we are today, so we want to see a better Deltona in the future than we are right now, and that's what we're trying to work for, and we are excited to work with you on this effort, and thank you very much for coming out on a Saturday morning, we're going to stay around if you have additional comments, but thank you again and we'll see you in August.